Selectmen to order. I'd like to ask you to all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. The flag sits at the back of the room. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Is there anyone here who would like to comment on an item not on the agenda this evening? Okay. In that case, let's move on to approval of the minutes of December 4th, which is item four in your packet.
Do you want to move acceptance of the minutes? That's present.
Second.
I did have one item that I think needs clarification, but I need your memories to help me. It's on page four of six, item C at the top, National Park Service in Wauwawa. "Kelly reported grants efforts are still in the works by Bolton Heritage Farm." I think that should say Bolton Heritage Farm Commission. And also in the next sentence, "The 2,200, uh, in funding being offered by the National Park Service must be reserved to elaborate." That didn't make sense to me.
I think that the intention is for it to "must be reserved" rather than just "must be," or "must reserved."
And is "elaborate" the right word?
Or does that celebrate, or to be utilized? I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that meant.
It is meant to augment the 300th celebration. Maybe that's almost a better word.
Okay.
But to expand upon or to otherwise improve.
Okay.
So what do you want "must be reserved"?
Perhaps even "for" the 300th celebration instead of general operations on the farm. Just cut out "to elaborate" on...
We just put "for."
"For."
I'll amend my motion to incorporate those changes. Do you want to amend your second?
Yeah.
The other, I did have another one.
Where?
Down under nine D. Pieroc wants "thesees," should just be "these."
Yeah, well, that is very strong.
I think that's, yeah, that's all I found. So it's been moved and seconded that the minutes be accepted as corrected. All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Thank you. That was unanimous. Appointments. Josh, I'm gonna let you introduce this.
Yes, so tonight we have three different individuals who have been asked to be appointed to official town boards and commissions. And I apologize, I've only met one of these individuals in person before and unfortunately she is not here tonight. But if Andrew Gordon or Matthew Rivers are here, please make yourselves known. But we have three, as I said, individuals interested. One is interested in the alternate position on the Inland Wetlands Commission. That's Andrew S. Gordon of 26 Brian Drive. He is a somewhat new compared to some folks here in the room, member of Bolton community, but has been here for quite a while, would like to get involved, and is an avid fisherman. Has been around aquatic resources all his life and would like to give back to the community. I don't know if he'd like to take us one at a time or if he'd like to introduce them.
Yeah, well, introduce everybody.
Okay.
Nobody appears to be present.
Sure. The up for, now Jean Laufman, I believe I pronounced her last name correct, of 20 Rosewood Lane, is interested in being moved from an alternate to a full member of the Conservation Commission. This comes with the recommendation of the Conservation Commission and she has quite a bit of extensive background. She's a co-chair of the CT Envirathon program. She's a certified master wildlife conservationist and as I said, already an alternate on the Conservation Commission. And then lastly, we have Matthew Rivers, who was recently at a, who would like to be an alternate on the Conservation Commission, taking Jean's place. These appointments, by the way, would fill all vacancies on the Conservation Commission, making it a full board. And he has been to a commission meeting. He has the support of the commission itself and wants to get a little bit more involved. He loves the parks and open spaces in town and wants to see what he can do to help the Conservation Commission and its mission.
I have no problem with these cases.
No, you want to move, why make a motion to reprove all three?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Under other, I want to put the focus group off till we get down to put the branding project under seven E.
Yep.
We also have two volunteers. And a lot of these volunteers, by the way, were as a result of indicating interest on the Bolton questionnaire. You had over 40 people
Yes, we did.
who indicated interest and we're, Josh is continuing to work that list. So I think it's good. But you want to talk about the two people for the Hartford Foundation?
Sure thing. And again, I haven't met individuals in person, so if you're here, please feel free to make yourself known. We have John Weaver of 216 Hebron Road and Kate Chambers of 11 Hanover Farms Road. Both have written to me expressing interest in serving on the Hartford Foundation Committee. For those of you who don't know, Hartford Foundation is set aside, I believe, a total sum of $100,000, but being utilized by the community right now in an installment of $50,000. And this committee is going to get together outside government purview to make decisions about how it should be spent to better the public. Both of these individuals, or neither of them, I should say, have submitted formal information on their background, unfortunately. But I have their names and they have expressed interest. I don't know either one of them, sorry.
I don't know either one of them either. Do you know either one of them, Bob?
No, I can't. So what I might suggest is just we contact them and just add just a little bit with my gimmicks, another, just a reminder, maybe we can chase up a couple. How many, was it five?
We needed five, yeah. But we have Carrie Concutelli and Liz Thornton.
Oh, you do already?
Who have, who are employees who have indicated a willingness to serve.
Oh, okay.
So these two, we just need one more who's not an elected official.
Okay.
They could be, I don't remember whether they could have been appointed person or not.
But both of these people reached out to me in the last week to inquire about it and I'm still waiting to hear back. So hopefully for the February meeting, I'll have all that information ready. Go forward. Did I add one more?
I'll give you another name tomorrow that follow.
Sounds great.
Julie Clark is the one I'm thinking of because
Oh, wow.
Well, he was really interested in doing some stuff, veterans oriented and stuff. So I think his input there might be.
Yeah, that might be a good idea because I'm sure he kept a list of projects that would be appropriate.
Right.
Yeah, reach out to him.
I'll give him a call.
That would be awesome. Okay. Next, the item is correspondence. And he didn't give me any, but I do have one. I got an email from Dan Foxon of, I totally forgot his name.
Converse, isn't it?
No, it's not Converse. It's that little street.
Oh, those are like, Shady Lane.
Shady, thank you. Great, Fred. He goes, he first wrote, unfortunately I don't have that page, but he first wrote to me and said he would like us to see us hold the line without any increases on non-union salaries, including those controlled by the Board of Selectmen. Taxpayers really cannot pay or sustain these type of optional wage increases at this time. And then he also wrote, I also read about the $8,000 spend on branding and creating a sense of place for Bolton and I'm not quite even sure what that cliche even means. I think it's a total waste of time and money. Low taxes, efficient government, good school, desirable quality of life, and safe neighborhoods with low crime rates are the best way to build a brand and create a sense of place born about Bolton with no marketing plan even needed. Also, in the expensive world of professional marketing, for only $8,000, the town would be lucky to maybe end up with a new catchier slogan and a new brochure too. Again, focus on people, what people are looking for in a place to live, help create, and the rest will happen. Stop spending taxpayer monies on such misdirected and inappropriate things like branding and creating a sense of place. I am even embarrassed to tell my friends, relatives, and colleagues about this. It is so foolish. And I wrote back to him and said, "Thank you for your comments." And invited him to town's, tonight's meeting. And he said, wrote back and said, "I still recommend saving the $8,000 and not pursuing the town branding and creating a sense of place. Very bad idea. Not measurable and the results for 8K would not be worth it. Sorry to hear the new administrator came up with this. Timing is terrible. Most people I talked to from out of town now know and have heard of Bolton as that place where some elected both Board of Education members hold ragers, allowing minors to use alcohol and drugs. Very sad for the town. Even if I were the flavor of a town marketing reset, now is definitely not the right time. I would hold the line on all non-union salaries, including those controlled by the Board of Selectmen." That's my correspondence. Comments, questions? Okay. Moving on. I thought that was me. Let's see, subcommittee reports. Go ahead.
Sure. So we had two subcommittee meetings since we this body last met. The first was a Finance and Administration Committee meeting on Friday, December 6th. There were several items discussed, including a few that will be mentioned later on today. Discussion on the existence of our Open Space Committee. Right now, it's generally defunct. And there was a question as to whether or not it should continue. You'll hear a little bit more about that tonight. The gun and lead the weapon policy likewise, and the Narcan policy. We discussed student representatives to the Board of Selectmen. A draft resolution was amended at that meeting and sent off to the Board of Education for, Board of Education Administrators for their consideration. We have not yet heard back on that. Fire Commission and attendance policy was generally discussed. The Fire Commission has been notified that they may increase the number of individuals on it and that the charter only has a minimum number of folks who must serve. And an attendance policy was decided against, or there was a recommendation against having it, but that may be discussed more at a later time. For ATV, on the subject of ATV noise, the committee said that there were a few specific individuals in town who had approached town officials about this issue. The concern, it seems to be, is around the general town center, wrong, the town center Hebron Road area. And there will be ongoing, a look, an ongoing look into this. Last discussed was the Blight Ordinance. This is a conversation that will continue and on into future meetings. Next was a Human Resources Committee meeting, which is held on Tuesday, December 10th. There were two main items discussed at that meeting. The first was consideration on personnel wage adjustments, specifically non-union wage adjustments, given that the union wages are already decided by contract. The second item, and there is a, I apologize, there is a proposal in front of you tonight on that item. And the second item discussed that that former subcommittee meeting was a review and discussion on a long-range strategic staffing plan.
Then I think we have those minutes in our packets.
Yes.
All right, next is a presentation by the Heritage Farm Commission. Thank you, ladies.
Okay, I'm not sure where to stand, given this.
What do you recommend? Should she stand here? You know what, why don't you stand over by Mike? That's comfortably better.
Well, you can, oh, you'll get it.
You should. It's a pretty wide line.
Okay, great. First of all, I want to thank you for inviting us here to
Would you give your name?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry. I know everybody knows you.
Yeah, that's fine. Beth Murray. I live in Center Road, been a resident for 33 years. I think I know everybody sitting at the table, including most of the people sitting in the room. This is the wonderful Bolton Heritage Farm Commission, all represented here, which is an impressive town. I want to thank you for allowing us to come and give you this presentation. I thought it might be a good way to start. I know you have this in your pocket, so I promise not to read it back to you. But I just wanted to remind us all what the ordinance that was created back in 2006 had to say about the Bolton Heritage Farm Commission. Our purpose is to preserve and restore the historical, cultural, physical, and archaeological integrity of the Bolton Heritage Farm's land and structures. To develop and submit for the Board of Selectmen's approval a written plan for the short and long-term mixed use of the Bolton Heritage Farm, which could include historical, agricultural, educational, civic, and tourism utilization. To implement the plan and to investigate, evaluate, and pursue various economic and other possible resources to support the Bolton Heritage Farm and for the funding of the goals set forth. So that was our mission when we undertook to write the business plan. And I think, just in general, the logic follows my B-school format that I have learned and put to use in my career as a real estate developer, entrepreneur for shopping centers across the United States. So we repurposed facilities around the country and I just thought this format would work. Our basic logic was to give you a sense of the history of the farm and at the recommendation of some people in the town, and in particular, we undertook to document that from reliable source material. So you'll notice that there's a lot of dates in here and in fact, there's also an appendix, Appendix B, which lists all the capital projects that have been undertaken at the farm, just so that we have it all in one document. And I tried to also put down where I got that information from. We wanted to give you a text history of, you know, what had happened at the farm since, you know, the beginning of Bolton's history. And then we wanted to cite any progress that had been made to date at the farm, not only by the commission, but by the many people in the community who've had an impact there. Not the least of which is the town, the Board of Selectmen and the town staff, the Regional Stewardship Committee, which met back after the farm was acquired and then vacated, Friends of the Rose Farm, Bolton Land Trust, the Historical Society, Troop 73 Boy Scouts, and all of the evil projects are listed as Appendix C on the business plan. Residents who just spend time at the farm and provide input and comments about its use. And the town of Bolton has actually been recognized by the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation with an award. In her nominating statement, Sarah Nelson, who wrote the original analysis of the structural and historical, to ask us of the farm, "The town of Bolton shows extraordinary vision, commitment, and perseverance by a municipality to preserve a nationally important historic site, working agricultural landscape, and the vanishing built environment of a New England farm." So we've been recognized on state level for our efforts at the Heritage Farm, which I think is impressive for a town of our size in particular. The next section of the report goes over the current status of the buildings and the grounds and the ways the farm is currently being used. And I won't repeat that because I, all the dot, the detail is in here. Then I wanted to spend some time exploring the current financial position because I think it's significant. One of the things that we think is very important to remember about the farm is that no matter what we decide to do with it, we have to include some component of revenue generation to offset the continuing nature of the maintenance and repairs that 100-plus acre property is always going to require. And we're very cognizant of that. We're not, we're not expecting the taxpayers to fund some million-dollar crazy renovation of the farm all in one gulp. We know that it has to be done over time and we know that it has to be done with an eye towards making the property as sufficient, as sufficient as possible. And so that, that was what has always been a guiding principle for us as we've pursued all the projects we've looked at. Currently, the town is supporting the farm in its buildings and grounds budget. The town staff does an amazing job above the level of maintenance that they are currently providing to the farm and we appreciate that. There's also, at the same time the ordinance was created to create the commission, you created a Heritage Farm Fund. This fund has been used over time to support a variety of projects at the farm as listed in the Appendix B. Currently, that balance at the end of 2019 was $58,233, which is a nice nest egg for future matching grants and other projects that we would like to pursue. Over the course of our tenure as a commission, we have undertaken a variety of fundraising and in-kind sponsorship activities. Initially, the Friends of the Rose Farm picked in $14,000 for a variety of projects, including a partial funding of the initial Sarah Nelson Edwards report. The Bolton Historic Society just recently donated $8,500 as their portion of a contribution towards replacing the roof on the farmhouse. The Heritage Farm Commission, for a long time, has had a Pitch in Linkins for History campaign, people putting pennies in bottles, but that and Rosie the Cow showing up at a variety of town functions, that alone has raised $3,500, which I think is impressive when you're talking about, you know, pennies, nickels, and dimes. And we've also used a variety of in-kind sponsorships to support different activities at the farm. The most visible one is obviously the Country Carpenters donating materials to redo the porch at the farm and the balance of that was funded by town funds. So little by little, projects have been accumulating and we've used money and opportunities where they have occurred. And we obviously want to pursue that as an ongoing effort. The possibilities for public-private partnerships between residents in the town will hopefully continue to fund needed repairs and we think that that's worthy of further exploration. Currently, there are no reserve funds for the farm at the town level. I know it gets put in the budget every year. I know it gets eliminated from the budget every year. But we strongly recommend that that's something that we consider for the future because opportunities for doing projects come up randomly. We can't predict when these grants are going to be available and when they are available, they generally require some sort of matching funds. And the only way to think big and go big is to be able to have that money at your disposal when the time, the time is right. The barn has been the major beneficiary of the grants that are out there, mostly because Connecticut has had many initiatives that support barn redevelopment and preservation. The farmhouse has suffered from a lack of available funds because it's a municipally-owned property and it does not date specifically from the revolutionary era, which is where most of the private funding is available. However, we just recently learned that the Sustainable Connecticut Program has a preservation and restoration fund for municipally-owned buildings. So we're going to be exploring that and we will continue to explore all the options that we find out there for going for Going forward. Ultimately, we wanted to put forth what we thought the farm could be used for. We spent a lot of time exploring this, looking at the different reports that the town of Bolton has received, the Bolton Center Study, the Byron Communities Study, our own studies and reports. And we've determined that the barn is probably the most, our best opportunity, has the highest potential for revenue generation and the most availability for outside funds. So our hope is that we have an opportunity over time to upgrade the barn for public use. Right now, it's just a storage use. And there are a lot of things that would have to be done, but we do not feel it's an impossible task. And there are some strategies at the end of the report which explain kind of how we feel this could happen. We know it will take time, but we foresee in the future that the building could be made available for public assembly, could be rented out, made available to the town for a variety of different functions, including meetings, could house the historical farm implements and other things that, you know, that the town has access to and other artifacts that were found on the farm that are revolutionary vintage, which right now are stored at an offsite location. The farmhouse has been more difficult to determine what the ultimate use of that is, but the building is not unsalvageable. I know there is a lot of concern about just how much time and money it would take to make the building habitable. We know from a lot of professional advice that the state does not need another house museum. And truly, the farm is not really a snapshot in any one period in time. The beauty of the farm is the fact that it explores the history of farming for the whole three, you know, centuries that it's been in operation. And so we wouldn't want to capture any one period in time. And you want, the property has been regenerated, rejuvenated over time to suit the needs of the people that are living in the present. And that's the way we foresee the farmhouse would be used, as a support building for whatever we are able to do at the barn. It could be a prep kitchen, it could be storage, it could be office space for someone who's trying to maintain farm operations or, you know, potentially a residence for a farm manager if we ever got to that level. So there are ways to make that happen. We have talked to some local contractors who have an interest in seeing how we might be able to do that in the most cost-effective way, again, as an in-kind sponsorship, public-private partnership, and whatever. And we'll continue to explore those opportunities. The grounds. The proximity of the farm to Town Hall provides opportunities for us to coordinate an activity. I know that the Board of Selectmen has on their wish list the opportunity to expand and improve the facilities at Town Hall to support town government operations and also community activities. And the infrastructure for that could be supported by some of the property that exists as either on the street all land or at the Bolton Heritage Farm. And being able to coordinate access, life safety, all of those storm water management, septic capacity, all of those activities in conjunction with any Town Hall renovations would then leverage up our ability to further improve things at the farm. So I know that there was discussion as part of the Bolton Center Study, the Byron Communities Study, on how to tie the whole center together and make it more viable. And, you know, that obviously would give the farm a lot better opportunity to hold just bigger and grander events. We also believe there's opportunities to generate revenue from field events. The reenactment that's being proposed for the Bolton Tricentennial, for instance, the reenactments are usually events that people are charged admission to attend. And this may not be the best time to do that because we're trying to put on a party to celebrate Bolton's 300th anniversary. But down the road, as we have more of this kind of activity, there's no reason why we can't charge some admission and make these, you know, revenue generating activities. There's also opportunities to better manage our forests and fields and have them provide a source of revenue to the community. I know the land trust is starting to look into that for some of the properties that they have acquired and we can piggyback on their efforts and all of the knowledge that they gain and seeing how that might be applied to our 100 acres as well. We also know that the National Park Service is now interested in the Washington Rochambeau Trail as, and our site in particular because of its pristine quality. And this is another way that we, as you are aware, may have some opportunity to leverage up our possibilities. So the last part of the report is our strategies for doing so. We want to develop a program plan for continued expanded use of the buildings. There are grants available right now and we have done work on preparing that. So if we were to achieve some consensus after your review of this report, we would like to pursue getting a program plan so we would understand exactly what's in front of us for expanded use of the buildings. We would like to determine what other funding sources are out there. There are always more money available, you just have to figure out where it is. And we'd like to explore similar projects both in-state and regionally. We know there are several. There's nothing exactly like Bolton Heritage Farm, but there's the farm at Hilltop and Southfield. There's farms on the western side of the state. Simsberry has one. That are being used in a variety of ways. How do they do it? How do they make it work? How are they organized? Who runs it? How is it managed? All of these things, I think, we can learn from and perhaps borrow from. This document is intended to grow and change as we continue to evolve as a farm. And hopefully that's why there's draft written all over it because we're looking for feedback from you. I'd love to answer any questions you might have or take any comments at this time. And if there's anybody else on the commission who wants to embellish on anything I've said, feel free.
I would like to just say that thought the draft
I would like to just say that the thought the draft was very well organized and very well, very thorough, a very good draft.
Thank you.
It's obviously done with a lot of work, a lot of legwork and a lot of love, so thank you for that. With the board's permission, I would like to take this up for more discussion at a facilities subcommittee meeting. And we will definitely invite you to that subcommittee meeting because I think we've got a great framework, but I do believe we need some dialogue, two-way dialogue
Absolutely.
on many of the items in here and to keep it moving. Josh, I think we have a tentative date.
We do. It would be a week from today at either four-thirty or five at your preference. That is the twenty-first of January.
Twenty-third at what time again, please?
Would you prefer fourth, four-thirty?
I prefer four-thirty, but we give it to five if that half hour would make a big difference for anybody.
It's, that does actually.
I'd rather four-thirty.
Four-thirty is great. Four-thirty is great. Love it.
This covers, it really covered everything we've fought, talked about, discussed, tried the, the whole time. It really is an extremely good job. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. I, I want to give credit to Josh's staff. We, we spent a morning in, in his office and gave his free access to his files and his people and they were fabulous because although we anecdotally remember a lot of this stuff, we just don't remember all the facts.
The sequence, yeah.
It was great to be able to go back and take a look at some of the actual documents and, you know, refresh ourselves. So Josh, thank you very much. And look forward to next week.
Okay.
Comments? Questions?
Hopefully are you working with the three-hundred view in the history people?
In terms of what?
Overwriting events that involve the heritage farm.
We are working very closely with the reenactment. And there are aspects of the reenactment that we hope will come to fruition through this grant with WARA, with the National Park Service. And so, yeah, we're kind of in each other's pocket for good, good.
So you hope.
For that event. Yes. The event will happen. It is happening. It's there.
Good.
Yeah, we've had a couple of, no, we, the collective group, Jim, Rupert, Josh.
John Butromovich, myself.
John Butromovich, Arlene and the organizer from the Reenactors Group have gotten together and put ideas on the table, put concerns on the table. And I imagine we'll have two or three or more of those meetings
Yes.
as time goes on, but.
There's one tentative we scheduled for the twenty-eighth. With Steve.
Really?
Yes. Believe so. And then one of the goals for the National Park Service is to get some interpretive sign of the show.
Be your selling tickets for audience people, for your lawn, right?
Right.
For your lawn, your park.
Parking in my house. And yours. We had a tentative meeting set for the twenty-eighth at three o'clock with Steve Gardner. Did he not get on the calendar?
I don't think so.
I can pull up the email if you want. If it's not going to work, just let me know. I'll call him.
Okay. It should work for me by the, it's open.
It was twenty-eighth.
Yeah. It doesn't work for me. I could do the afternoon of the twenty-ninth.
Was that, was that a Friday?
No. The twenty-eighth is a Tuesday. The twenty-ninth is Wednesday.
It's Wednesday. So you want to change it to the twenty-ninth?
Yeah. I could actually do anything after ten.
Three o'clock has to be the date for Steve, I mean, the time for Steve.
Three has to be the time.
So you want to do it on the twenty-ninth?
At three.
Let me just double check and I will CC you Sandy in the email. And Josh.
Good job, Will.
Thank you.
Jim and John to make sure they can be there.
Quick question. Have we ever come up with any kind of a guesstimate cost of what it would take to get the barn in a position where we can use it for functions?
No, and that's why we want to do this program planning grant because it specifically calls out an architect's and, and code, you know, life safety code type of analysis so that you can then put some numbers to that because we, we don't have that. The uni, the original Nelson Edwards study that was released in two thousand eight had, I mean, we were so far back from where we are now at the time. They had a chronology of what needed to happen, but we didn't actually have a, a, a use, you know, plan for the farm. So they didn't get specific. That's really the next step for us is, you know, we've stabilized the buildings as best as possible now. We need to determine what, what it's going to take to get us to the next level.
Yeah, step A, B and C. Well, well, the initial drawbacks on it was the, is, is the support on the floors.
That was my next question. Is it going to include that?
That is, that is still.
Well, that has to be the first one.
Yeah. That's why you have to have an architect. That's why it's, you know, we've talked to people in the town.
Right.
And you were shot inside and removed.
Now, is, is the support that was, support sufficient of people
To make it worthwhile to add.
to finish up the other work.
Correct.
And, and in our conversations with Sarah, we have been talking to her about the, the next step and what to do. The other thing that she can do for us is to break the barn down into sections. It may be viable to take a certain section of the barn and fix that up, get people into it and then have a process of, of what can be accomplished to maybe not do everything all at once, but have areas. There's just so many things. There's not having like the way.
And the areas like a milking parlor are, are on ground level, so the structural support is not as necessary there.
Well, the milking parlor would just need the interior
Right.
finished with life support.
We need, we need, yeah, we need so many help and safety.
Yeah, right. That, that's going to be the biggest thing in that section.
And the hay portion of the barn is the part that artistically is the part where if you're going to hold a function, you're not going to hold it
Correct.
when you've got these little, you know.
I knew it was.
It's not the memorial, it's the, it doesn't, it doesn't really make for.
Correct.
No.
But there, there are.
It's the easiest to fix.
It is.
And there, there is a huge interest in people just wanting to be able to get out of the weather for something in the barn.
Right, exactly.
And I think if Sarah Nelson, if, if we do get the grant and we do give her the okay to, to start the study, then she may find things in areas in the barn that we don't even think of.
Sure. And for an example, she was out one day and we found a crossbeam support in the hayloft that was cracked that nobody, we had all been there a week before and nobody had seen it and just her trained eye from a different angle, it's like, oh my God.
But, but you know, I think the thing that we, we have to keep reminding ourselves is that when we started in two thousand eight, you know, was twelve years ago, we all thought it was the impossible dream. I mean, and, and we took it a piece at a time. We did this sill repair, this foundation repair, this drainage repair, this, you know, and, and accumulated. It's, it's magnificent and it.
Then you have the fire.
Yeah. But, you know, you, you just, you work through each little piece from time. And that's, that's what Sarah can do for us. She can give us those steps.
You did what it took to properly preserve the structural integrity of the building. Now it's moving on utilization.
Correct.
Because it's step two, the major step two.
Correct. And, and I can't say this for sure, but the, the ten thousand dollar grants, probably we're going to have to.
It's going to be all.
That may, but it will. But, you know, so as we're getting in there, we really need, we need a final business plan, something we all agree on so that we can go for the larger get, get money in the town gardens and take forward.
Yeah. The only thing of all, everything that was said tonight that I don't particularly agree with and that's the expansion of the Town Hall on its current location. Because I, I would hate to see a modern building stuck in the middle of that church, Town Hall, barn, farmhouse.
You can, you, well.
I, I would rather have a Town Hall here as a building separate.
That's, that's way out of line.
I know, I was going to say.
I'm not being an outsider. I'm not saying that.
No, but one of your, one of your points that you mentioned there in, in, I, I looked at it in, in the big picture because one of the key elements, it, it really is a pretty mundane element is as part of the, the improvement of the center is a community septic system. And that, that, that provides.
And access and egress for the Town Hall.
Well, it also, yeah, but, but you, without that, you can't have major, real major functions there. The library will finally have
A working system.
a working system that is, and all the other town, we have several town buildings on, on systems that are older than me. And that's pretty damn old.
And you have storm water management to deal with in the center of town. You have, you have life safety issues, you know, how do you get fire trucks in and out, back behind there? All of those issues have to be resolved in some manner and, and all I'm saying is think about it globally.
Well, the farm is a part of that.
It's a part of that.
The farm is a, is very much a part of that.
And if we resolve that issue, you, you then have opportunities to use the buildings at the farm in a totally different way.
Right.
Exactly right.
So that was my only point. And I'll let you fight it out.
Yeah, okay. I agree.
And I'd like to take this discussion to the subcommittee meeting. Not that it's not valuable yet, but I've got a lot of things on my agenda tonight.
Oh, no, no.
He's trying to like power on it.
One, one comment for Mr. Armita. Country Carpenters does a wonderful job at building modern buildings at that local.
Oh, I can handle that. You know, I, because we've talked about that, does it need to be brick and, you know, look like a modern office building? I wouldn't want to see a modern office building in that location.
And we have in, in town.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. It could be done.
So to, to not keep your town center viable is something. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And under other, Josh, can you give us an update on the town garage? Cause some great things are happening.
Yes, I can. Today, the metal framing went up and tomorrow they hope to pour the washroom floor. So things are moving along at a good place.
Yeah, they look like about, so after, no, we're just about done getting all that initial framing.
Good.
So.
That's cool.
Okay, um, we have no, you have nothing else under other, I don't think.
No, that was it.
We have no budget transfers, which is a good thing. Do you want to walk us through the budget revision?
Sure thing.
I do seventy.
Yes, you each have a one-page, one-sheet budget report. The good news is that we are beating past prior year expectations. We are currently under by about four percent from last year, just a little under, I guess, four percent. That being said, there's no one line that I feel, that I personally feel sticks out or at least that we haven't already addressed. Of course, we all know and we've discussed exactly why the fire commission is a little bit above average and we've discussed why a couple other lines are a little bit below like that of processing. But if you have specific questions, I'm very happy to answer them.
I'm kind of interested why highways and streets is fifty-five percent compared to about forty-seven last year. It doesn't feel like we've had as many snow days.
Well, I don't believe that we have. My understanding is that it has to do with when sand and salt was paid for last year. And that's why that last year was behind, but the other years were pretty consistent with fiscal year eighteen and seventeen.
Thank you.
Not going.
Anybody else have questions? Okay, moving on, um, the branding project, sure.
I'm sorry, Sandy, I can talk a little bit about some of the items in front of you. First and foremost, I'd like to, I guess, address the public comment that you got.
Yeah.
A little sorry to hear that we have a resident who feels as strongly as he does it, but from what I heard, there were three very specific points that he made as to why this branding project shouldn't go forward. And I feel like I've done quite a bit of legwork to dispel all of those preconceived notions. I don't feel that one of them is extremely accurate. Those three items were that it's not the right time, that we wouldn't be getting a lot for our money and that it's immeasurable. So first and foremost, on it not being the right time, I think the fact that right now people outside of town know if they know who we are, it's because of scandal out in the news and the media or it's just as Bolton being whatever other preconceived notions he might have listed in the letter. The reason to have a branding campaign and a marketing campaign is to try and show the world outside of Bolton what we want to be, what, how we want others to perceive ourself. We want people to know that we're a very warm, welcoming community, that we're small and beautiful and everything that comes with that. And the focus group that we've discussed a couple times now at this point would be the group to decide exactly how to deliver that message and what message they want to see delivered. But getting out ahead of and even behind issues as we saw a couple months ago with that involved a public official, I think that makes it the perfect time to get out and try and have a positive message be spreading to our neighboring communities and even right here at home, try and get, inspire some pride in our community. On the second point, I know we wouldn't get a lot for our money. You'll see, first and foremost, you've all had the chance, I sent by email, the request for quotes that I sent out to the three folks who sent us in quotes. You can see exactly in there what we would receive in terms of final deliverables and that's listed right here again in the agenda item summary. It's the second paragraph under discussion and analysis on the first page. It's quite a bit. It's research conducted on the town's history and trying to look at what that message should be moving forward. It's a strategic plan of how to execute a branding campaign, a marketing campaign and how we move forward with it. And it's those deliverables. It's, it's includes and is not necessarily limited to logo, refined sketches. There's a lot of work that goes into that, color scheme, mission statement, tagline, business cards, so much more. So it's not just a study, but it's also some concrete, quite a few concrete deliverables that compared to the other quotes of twenty-one thousand or fifty-nine thousand are, where we would be getting, for the same items, we would be getting quite a deal. And the third item is that it's immeasurable. On the contrary, I've provided you in this section of the packet, it's your first attachment after the agenda item summary that says strategies for measuring brand success. And you've each had the chance to see a draft of this before now and I sent this out a little earlier today after I had the chance to talk to some folks from Mansfield. And you can see a little bit more about the conversations that I had with other towns in the second attachment after strategies for measuring brand success. But between all of these towns, I've had the chance to develop fifteen very specific and numerical ways that we can measure the success of a branding campaign. That ranges anywhere from percent change in property value growth to the percent change in number of students who choose to attend Bolton's schools from other, you know, from Columbia as well as Hartford up to even how much are our businesses making? Is their revenue increasing by more than a marginal rate? And is it statistically significant? We can measure all of the things that are listed in here. We can have a, it's a very easy return on investment given that the investment is eight thousand dollars and just a point zero five percent increase in property, residential property value, never mind commercial, would result in a return, sorry, a breakeven point being hit. But I did speak with several towns around the state going off to that next attachment that says branding input, other Connecticut towns, to talk to them about what they're doing. So there are a few towns like Mansfield that just recently completed a branding project and there are others like Vernon that are currently in the midst of it. So I spoke with, in the case of Vernon, John Rowe, a resident, reached out pretty excited and reached out through Gwen Marion, very excited that we're tackling this. Others are official town. Others are official town staff from each of the different municipalities that I was able to get in touch with. Um they had a lot of great insight, they had some tips and tricks. Um each of them very much recommended that we go with uh that if you're going to do a branding campaign, you need to hire a consultant, you need to have a focus group that works with them, that's going to represent public interest. Um and uh uh there's quite a lot more that goes into that, and I recommend that you read that as thoroughly as you can. Um because I I thought it was quite interesting and it will be very helpful. Uh I also, this is actually started out as a inquiry about a later item that we'll talk about, which is the economic development grant, but I had a chance to speak with Courtney Hendrickson, who's the project manager for the CIRC grant, the CIRC economic development grant that we're taking part in. Um just to get her two cents on is this something that she is going to be included in the recommendations that CIRC produces for Bolton? Um she said absolutely, it's a good idea, and we support branding projects all around the state, we strongly recommend it. Um there are a few other points I can make, all of it very much reiterating what I've been able to put in writing. But the long and the short of it is, this represents an investment in our community, uh a pretty cheap investment, all things considered. Uh that will potentially have some very real economic uh or provides the town with a very real potential for economic development, for increased po property values, for increased business sales, uh for increased business attention, uh and so much more. And I think that it would be in our best interest to pursue it. Um and to get a group of people together who are very interested and passionate about um the town to help steer that. And to that end, and I I apologize that I didn't think to uh include this in correspondence. I had two folks come in, but I we did speak about the fact that we have two folks who came in very interested in being a part of uh this focus group, my understanding is that there might be another. Um but Dorothy Hall of eighty-three Brookfield Road is a designer in of herself. She came in to ask a couple questions about where we thought the branding campaign would go, and I think she wanted to dispel another preconceived notion that I know has been roaming around online, that a branding campaign is about bringing in big box business, and that's not the case. We can brand and market to have people come and see our trails, to visit the Bolton Heritage Farm, um to get acquainted with the culture that we have here with uh you know, just everything that we have to offer. And it doesn't have to be about bringing in your Walmarts, uh your drive-through McDonald's and everything uh that folks associate with your larger uh commercial communities like Manchester or Hartford. So um but she was so she had a couple questions about that, she was very happy to hear um that there isn't necessarily a lot of uh enthusiasm for other big box companies, uh at least on this board. Uh and she was very enthusiastic about joining the focus group. And then David Mitchell of twenty-five Mount Sumner Drive came in and said that he had a few ideas that he would like to share with the group, didn't know that it hadn't already been established, and then when he heard that it hadn't quite been established, said that he would like to be a part of it and jumped in.
And um Tanya.
Right.
Tom Magoro.
Yeah, still got on my phone because I.
Tomorgo whatever her name is.
Yes.
Um she's the new occupant of the former Barger resident um residence on Old Bolton Road.
Able, yeah.
Um has um.
She's.
Also volunteered your services to serve as part of the focus group, and I've reached out to Heidi Locke, um who does marketing for a major corporation, to ask if she would be interested in just helping us uh on a focus group as well.
I did have two other thoughts about focus group additions. Um no one specific, although Arlene and I did have a passing conversation about it earlier. Um but is that if we're going to be looking at property values, potentially finding someone in the community uh from Bolton who is involved in real estate might be useful, um they might have a different perspective.
I think we have an selectmen who does that for a living.
I'd be more happy to help them.
So does that. Um and someone also from the school side who can help us think about how we would be marketing to younger folks, to students who might be interested in coming to Bolton High. Those were my two the two things that were passed around here.
They can throw me up.
I want to weigh in on this. I have some experience through the the property value culture. And we made a big point of trying to get a great cross-section of diverse of people from all over the world, even though you've hit upon many of those real estate schools, residents, et cetera. I couldn't help but to think that if I didn't hear about this and I wanted to be a part of it, how would I need to know? So would I like to see personally is some kind of a at least an attempt to broadcast through the uh E-Bolton or something like a job vacancy? And then you gotta invite people or redirect it, anyone who's redirected to let us know. That way, you know, one of the things we have to think about down the road is if we're going to pursue this, we have to have buy-in from lots of people. And if we miss somebody who feels excluded, who wanted to be a part of it, it's not a good thing.
No, I think that's a great idea. So um.
So that's what I recommend.
Okay. Um is there anybody on the board of selectmen who just not want to participate as part of the focus group?
I don't.
So I'll have Josh reach out to all those who have volunteered, see if we can get a meeting set up for, I'm thinking late February.
Okay.
Um at least after the seventeenth.
See, one of the things that you have to think about is is somebody who has a small business.
Right.
Like England lumber or England hardware. What if, you know, who represents those kind of people?
Yeah. Somebody from the Economic Development Commission maybe want, so. Yeah, enough said.
You might do better with planning and zoning, you might get Jim Cropley.
That's true, oh, Jim Cropley would be a great position too, because he's planning and zoning and a small business owner.
Right, you've got a lot of small business owners from planning and zoning, and they also have a really good idea of um business, what can happen, what's what's working, what's not working, what we'd like to have work.
Okay, so um I don't believe we need a motion to convene the focus group, I think we can just do it.
Okay.
Um unless someone wants to formalize it with a motion.
No.
But we can do it by consensus and we'll get that meeting set up. And Josh, thank you for doing um all of this background work.
By the way, one of the other things I thought about, what about people who have left Bolton?
People who have left.
Left Bolton, why did they leave? Like that's a lot. Now, he was happier and he left, why? He didn't go to college, he didn't retire, dance out, but why did he leave? Or did he miss most of our Bolton time? Hmm? That's why there are so many different.
No, there are, there are, the the pot list of possibilities is endless, and I think just getting this dialogue going is really important. So, okay, so we will get that on our calendars. Um let's see, I don't believe that we have any other. So moving on to new business, um consider and possibly act on the recommendations made by the Human Resources Subcommittee regarding general wage increases for non-union employees. That should be in your packet as item eight A.
Just a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Have represented the two point seven five, you have that number represented?
So it's two point seven five with a couple exceptions. Um one is anyone who is making under um under eleven dollars an hour in recreation, who is going to be working in the summer, is moved up to eleven. And anyone who is um for the rest of the year, right, it moves up to twelve.
I I should have mentioned, I know that you were way.
Okay, um election moderators moved up to fifteen dollars an hour, which is more than two point seven five, and the fire department had its own specific request, which ends up being above two point seven five.
Yeah, that's a different, that's a structure.
Everything else is a two point seven five.
That's a structural change. And and the as far as the monitors and all that, we we've been discussing after two years to bring them up to a
Right.
A decent level, we did in stages. Okay.
Um as we look at this, um in the past, we have used the salaries for first selectmen, deputy first selectmen, selectmen and town administrator as placeholders in the budget, but not approved those wages with the general wage increase motion. So um I'd like to move that we um approve this total wage increase um for budgetary purposes of two hundred twenty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars for salaries um with the first selectmen, deputy first selectmen, selectmen and town administrator to be formally set um at a later date.
Is that a second?
Uh oh, I'll I'll second.
Oh, you're nodding your head, I didn't want you to jump in, I'll I'll second.
Okay.
But I'm going to stay on it because I fall under one of the other categories.
Okay, gotcha. Other than selectmen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm far apart.
Oh, that's right. Thank you for that reminder. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions?
What?
Would you like to state the reason for your abstention for that?
Just because I'm included under the fire department, other than that, I would vote aye.
Thank you. Um would you include that in the minutes? Thank you. All right, moving on to, I lost my place again. Open uh open space committee. So we had talked at a prior meeting about um because there are no sitting members um on the board, um the current open space committee, but it is a charter provided uh required committee um that we um move that the board of selectmen add an open space management and acquisition to our regularly scheduled meeting agenda no less than quarterly until such time as the open space committee is reestablished and its responsibilities or its responsibilities are otherwise assigned. Um and that the Conservation Commission in planning and zoning be invited to comment and provide updates um on open space at our own meetings. And I so move.
Yeah, that's a good.
Yeah, I'll second that because we talked about this a bit.
That's a good resolution, and also you might, John, this recommend to the Charter of Vision Committee that it doesn't make sense to have that as a separate. I mean, they that's one of those items, I don't know if we we had them looking at that or not, but.
I think we did.
We probably did, but that's one thing they should look at.
Yeah.
I mean.
We certainly.
We we have done all the action on that the past several years.
Right, right.
Purchases and everything have come, been initiated by this board and done by this board, so.
It doesn't make any, really doesn't make any sense for it to exist the way it exists. You see, it either you make it a part of another commission or give it the responsibility to to the selectmen. That's it.
Yeah.
How it exists doesn't make sense.
And I feel it is personally, it is important with who takes responsibility, who's accountable?
Us.
Who initiates? Who initiates?
In in the recent past, we have, and we've acted on it, and it's kind of we've done the job for the past several years.
Which means you're thinking ahead, right? Oh.
We we've taken our responsibility for for the past few years because nobody else has, so.
As long as we do.
Yeah, and and.
What, it'll be a quarterly? And I actually think it would be a monthly agenda item.
It could be, it's just so we check the box.
Just so we check the box and make sure nobody's aware of something.
Right, an issue.
Or either an issue or a property that may be coming up because we all have different network.
Right.
Right, so.
Yeah, it's not a big deal to have it as a regular agenda item, it just.
Because there's an awful lot of them, if you just say nothing.
I feel better. I feel better.
All right, thank you.
Okay, you're gonna men manage your motion?
I'm glad we can feel that by something that simple.
Well, the motion says no less than four.
Oh, all right, okay.
So we.
So we'll just put it on a monthly agenda.
Just put it on a monthly, yeah, by by consensus.
We can do, that's easy.
Yep.
You can keep you can keep that for a second.
Is that a formal motion?
It was a formal motion.
Okay, I know, I knew the problem. Thank you. Can you hold up, ask a question on the open spaces?
Sure.
Um in the past, I know that with development, you get a certain percentage of land or fee in lieu of. So when the board of selectmen accept this as their responsibility, will you include in it?
That's planning, that'll be a success.
No, but the fund goes, used to go into an open space fund.
It does.
It will continue to do that, that's that's actually an ordinance.
Yeah, that's dedicated.
An existing ordinance.
It'll automatically.
It says it's automatic, it automatically goes there.
Okay, because that's been a concern.
Then we we expended like for the property of the high school.
Right, right.
So we we actually expend the funds, so.
I just want to make sure that if it is not a committee of its own, that the that the funding part still.
The fund will continue to stay stay separate and those monies will go.
That's that's protected and we've been spending as, you know, as meet so as meet as we find opportunity.
All right, moving on to the gun and legal weapons policy, this was also um. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
You can hold on.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, that's unanimous. Moving on to eight point two, thank you for that.
On that one, if you were chatting earlier, but I uh I have two concerns. One, um I think having that as an ordinance is premature because, you know, I I'm assuming and I I think I correctly assume that the goal is to to for the employees and people who utilize the town buildings to have a sense of security. And um I think realistically, and I know the library, and I know we're initiated, but I know the library have because they sort of by themselves, they think they're they're at night, uh there's always been concerns on their part about their safety and security and, you know, I appreciate that and recognize it. And I think before we go forward on something like this, we should look at one other aspect, and I think that a key component of dealing with some nutcase coming in and be it a machete, a knife, a weapon, whatever, um in in into a facility and create some mayhem is to train your staff and how to protect themselves, where to go, how to go, and 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 what to do in those situations. That's paramount, that's the only way you're going to truly protect anybody. Because we're not going to we're not going to put a metal detector, we're not going to have an armed guard there to to protect these people. I think what we should do, uh what I would like to have done initially is really talk with our with our resident troopers and and have them go there and meet and make whether they train or we have someone train our staff on how to, and this is being done in many places. Obviously, it's being done in 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 the uh our religious institutions and and other places. How do you protect yourself in scenario A being? How do you protect yourself in scenario A, B and C, in those being, you're being, you're being threatened by, you know, whatever? An individual physically with a weapon, et cetera. How do you, what do you do? How do you do it? How do you protect yourself and your people in there? That, I, I would like to see us start with that before we go here. That's, that's my, my feeling. I, I think having the ordinance without this, it, it doesn't, doesn't, I mean, all it does is provides a, a sense of mental protection, but truly, I don't believe it, it provides any sense of real protection. And if our goal is to provide, provide protection, and I know it is, I mean, obviously, um, I know the committee, that was, that was the, that's what you were looking to do, no doubt in my mind, and I think if that's what we're going to do, I think the way to do it is at least looking at this, what can we do, and not just library, but town hall too. I mean, town hall can be accessed in different ways, and you got people sort of, yeah, pocketed in little corners. There's always been that concern, what do we do? Well, I think it's, I think we should have a plan, a training, and, and have, have things in place that could be utilized to, to hopefully never have to utilize it, but should, should, should it come to fruition, we have a plan to protect ourselves, or your staff, your people, and everybody there in the town. And I, I'd like to see that looked at before we go forward with this proposed ordinance. And, and I think, open for discussion. I think, I mean, we're, we're five people. I think there's other, other people might have some positive suggestions, but everything that, when you kind of read about this thing is, um, what's being done is, is they're, they're training people. People, and, and it's not, you're not asking like a librarian to pack a forty-five. That's not what, what I would even suggest, but I think it's, it's important that those people know what to do rather than just sit there, oh, you know, expletive, expletive, what do we do? It's that, kind of, if you train people, you got a, there's the best chance of survival in these type of, is, uh, these types of weird instances, attacks, whatever you want to call it. So, I, I would ask that the board consider and Sandy, looking at this, at least, at least, selling it with, with our resident troopers. They may have
Sorry.
A better suggestion.
She's got a pill or a ball. No, it's my sister calling.
Okay. They may have, I mean, a, a more cohesive suggestion than I'm talking about. I, I just looked around at some of the things that have been done, but, um, anyways, that's, that's my suggestion.
No, I, I think that's valid, and, um, maybe it's my people memory, but I don't remember that we discussed the fine thing at the.
I don't remember the fine. I just remember that we talked about prohibiting carrying weapons in municipal buildings, not having it in the, parking lots are excluded from that because you could leave your weapon in your car and then you could walk in. And, you know, I do agree with Bob as far as training our people and having safe places and all of that, and I think that that goes hand in hand with whatever we might pass, but similar to the fact that we have no smoking buildings, which, you know, if people could light up and we couldn't stop them, so to speak, without a police officer here, this goes along the same way. I, I do not, you know, I'm, I'm a gun likes activist, like most of us are, but I do believe there are places that they don't belong, and I think municipal buildings and school buildings are places and, and potentially houses of worship as well, where weapons are not appropriate, and, you know, it, like I said, I think these two go hand in hand, and if we want to pursue looking at the, the method that Bob was talking about prior to enacting something, that's fine with me, but I still believe that meetings where we could, people get hot headed, probably not great places to carry weapons, and, you know, if it makes one person feel more secure, then, then I would be fine with it, but, but if you want to look at something else first or in conjunction, I'm more than willing to go along with that.
Sorry, just to jump in with a clarification. So, attachment two you'll see is a letter from the attorney, which was requested at the committee.
Yeah.
And in that letter, he stated that there would be no way to apply a fine, which was mentioned briefly, just as a way to enforce the ordinance, and he said that there would be no way to do that without having a fine appeal ordinance in place.
Yes, no, I don't.
So if it's not, uh, something that's finable, then we wouldn't need to worry about anything else in this package.
Right. You know, I would just, when we were talking, I was foreseeing a little, you know, thing over the door, smoke free building, weapon free building kind of thing, and, you know, and like Bob said, you can't stop somebody if they're carrying it, you know, if they're carrying.
They can't even stop them in the airports.
Right. Right, right, you know, so I.
But, but I, but, but, you know, but you were right to bring this thing up. This is, I mean, obviously, this is a critical issue, and whether someone decides that if, if it's not a religious institution, they get ticked off because the library doesn't allow them to use a printer or something like that, you, you just don't know. And then, and having, uh, I think having a staff trained, number one, I think they, they feel better about it. They'll feel safer, and it's not just a, a, uh, a practice just to make them feel good. I think it's, it's teaching them how to survive a situation that, God willing, never happened.
I think we've actually done.
We, we have a while back, but it was a while, isn't it?
No, we did something just before Josh came.
Oh, yeah, you did.
We did an online.
Oh, yeah.
Active shooter.
Right.
Drill because the, one of the unions had requested it.
Right.
But it's certainly something that could be repeated, maybe live, because.
Yeah, because.
Things get updated.
Yeah, look at the library. The li, I, I look at that building, it's structured and it's roomed. It has safety rooms. But how?
Has rooms that could function as safety rooms.
Exactly, and, and you have to train people to, to, to do that, to recognize it. How do you do it? How do you? And I think it's, I think what, what you all did earlier is a good introduction, and I think, I think it should be followed up with actually training to do that. I mean, take, take staff time to train and do that. It's not, you know, as a kid, we did fire drills. We did all those drills, and you did it for a reason, because when it happens, you, you just do it. And, and I think it's important, um, for, in today's weird society, I think we have to take every, every, every effort we can, and that might be a good start.
I agree with you.
I agree.
So, do we want to put this back to subcommittee?
Uh, can we just table it until we've taken some action on the training?
Certainly.
Yeah, I, I, I'll, I'll move that to table it, so I'm.
I moved in second to table this until, um, after staff training has been scheduled and completed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? That's unanimous. Okay, moving on to the, I can't speak. I can't. What else is this? The Narcan policy.
The lock zone.
Well, that what it is?
Yeah.
The lock zone.
The lock zone, okay.
Narcan.
Thank you.
Complete with diagrams and everything.
Well, this is what would go in our policy and procedures manual, so it would be distributed to all employees, and I'm hoping that the fire department will come do some sort of a demonstration.
Yeah, there is a much easier one to use now. It's, it looks like a little after an inhaler kind of thing.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you just open the pack, boom, it's done. It's, you don't have to assemble anything. It's very, so I might want to change the, the drawings and things, and, uh, I'll make a motion that we approve this with one caveat that prior to it going into effect, we just checked with the Department of Public Health to make sure they have no objection to us having our buildings. I don't think there is, and I wouldn't foresee them having any problem, but, but just prior to us enacting it or putting it into the buildings, we just get a okay from them. And you, you might want to check with Bruce.
Yep.
Or, you know, I can get you the information. In fact, they got them on my truck. I can show you exactly what it is. It's, it's just a little blister pack. It looks like an inhaler.
Okay.
It's much, much easier to use than this.
Excellent.
I'd say for that.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no harm and only upside.
Yeah.
Oh, 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 yeah.
Yep.
It's like having a vestibule.
Yep.
Although, exactly.
We have those in our buildings.
Yes. All those in favor of adoption of the Narcan policy?
Aye.
The lock. Zone.
Yes. Aye.
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 Bob?
Aye, I'm sorry. I said aye before you, you making a motion. I'm sorry.
Gotcha. All right, so that was also unanimous. All right, um, I don't believe we have anything under the other category this evening. Moving on to the first selectmen's report. Our sustainable Connecticut. Committee met, um, after our last meeting. We've gone through about two thirds of the actions on the list. We had some good ideas for future actions, and our next meeting is, um, January twenty-second at seven P M. That's from you.
Who?
From you. Nope. Okay.
Oh, I love it. It's gonna let me.
The, um, uh, let's see, um, F O I training, just a reminder that that's being held, um, Monday, February twenty-fourth at seven P M. We've invited all of the boards and commissions, um, and especially their chairs to attend.
When is that?
February twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
February twenty-fourth, yeah. And then, uh, the Kappa meeting, um, and we'll be talking about this more, um, at our budget hearings, is January twenty-seventh at the Board of Ed building.
Twenty-seventh?
Yep, at seven P M.
Yeah, I think that one. Who? Where is that going to be held?
Board of Ed conference room.
Oh, because we may be over there holding another meeting for the fire department, training for drug use utilities, depending on how many people are showing up, they may go over there anyway.
Okay. January twenty-seventh, got it. We had a, um, with the economic development grant, um, as Josh mentioned earlier, he had spoken to Courtney Hendrickson today, and she, um, she's told us that they hope to have a draft for that in our hands by the end of February. Although I originally thought it was going to be the end of January.
Yeah.
Things like that are moving targets.
It's not me.
Not me. It's away.
No, that is.
Do we have, for getting a summary of that meeting, we haven't seen a center in the country.
No, that's the economic development grant that I was just talking about, that we're expecting by the end of February. Oh, and charter revision, um, is going to meet on January thirtieth. That would be their, that'll be their organizational meeting, so. We had a meeting scheduled with the individual from the National Park Service on the twenty-first of January. That meeting has, is in the process of being rescheduled to sometime in mid to late February. The individual from National Park Service got called back to active duty. So, um, that's it, and I am meeting on the twenty-ninth of January with the school strategic plan consultant who's asked to meet with the first selectmen. So if you have any comments that you'd like me to share with them, get them to me by the twenty-eighth.
They're, they're updating their?
They're updating their tenure strategic plan.
She said, of course, since this said she was going to get some people involved.
Yeah, she, she had originally said she was going to, um, hold a public comment session, and I know they had one meeting, they had their kickoff meeting with them on a Sunday afternoon. And then, um, he's meeting individually with teachers and, um, staff people at the school, and he's asked to meet with me. So I don't know where, where they are in the process, but by our February meeting, I'll have some updates for you.
Is it the same one that you had before from this view?
All I know is his name is Lyle and he lives in Massachusetts, so. Sorry. I think that's it for updates, my updates unless you have anything. No, that's it. Josh?
Um, I'll try and keep it brief. Personal, but yeah, of course. Yeah. Personal updates. Um, we have three postings right now for handyman, for land use assistant. Sadly, Kathy will, has decided that it's time to retire. So, um, she is, um, taking a step back. Yes, um, she will be here through the end of February, so we have some time, but we're trying to get this out sooner rather than later in the hopes that maybe there is at least a couple of day overlap where she can try and show the new folk, uh, the, the new hires of the ropes, so to speak, and the program coordinator, uh, position. Uh, we're still looking for folks interested in that. For the F Y twenty-twenty-one budget, uh, I, we have our first hearing next week. By the end of this week, I'm.
It's not a hearing.
It's a workshop. Oh, sorry, workshop, workshop. I apologize. Um, but I hope to have that in all to you by the end of the week. I just need to talk to Sandy about a couple, um, structural things and how you want to see it presented.
Could you, could you just, um, resend the, the meeting?
Yes.
And go again.
Well, actually, I can give all of those to you, um, tonight. I'll get those in just a second.
Oh, you can just send them out.
Well, I, I actually have a handout that I wanted to do.
Okay.
Which is to, this citizen's guide to the Bolton Town Budget. It's something that, um, was, um, initiated by Emily Bradley and, um, and was furthered by Sandy and Kristen Hecht and myself, um, as a means of trying to get out more information about the budget process, about budget workshops, uh, and really getting into the nitty gritty of, of what folks should expect from this procedure. So, all of the, uh, the dates are there, but I'll send this out also via email, just so that you all have it in, in whatever place you want it. Um, I hope that this kind of meets your expectations, and, and I hope that it gets some people to come out and give their comments and thoughts. So, uh, that's really it on the twenty-one budget. We'll have much more to talk about next week. The three hundred celebration, the next meeting is Thursday, uh, January twenty-third, so not two days from now, but a week from then, at the senior center. Um, so I, if anyone has the chance to come on down, I encourage it. Our next three hundred celebration event is tomorrow night at, I, I think it's six thirty P M at the library, uh, and it's about how Bolton Town Roads got their names. And then, just touching on a couple of, of, you know, progress updates on some of my goals, we've discussed a couple tonight. I will be meeting with Joe Moselli next week about the new representative program and learning through service opportunities. I have completed a draft along with Jill Collins, our finance director, and have sent it to Sandy for review. That's our finance, our financial policy manual. Um, we've trimmed it from forty-five pages of bulk and redundancy down to sixteen pages that I think, uh, are very pertinent to everything we do, are very thorough.
I'll give you a hurrah for that.
And I, I hope that you all feel it's comprehensive as Jill and I think it is.
Well, having a.
I have to admit to not having even opened that.
That's okay.
Having a forty-page document, it's like, if you can remember by the time you're on page thirty, what the hell you read on page one.
Yeah.
You can't, and if it's a financial document, you, by the time you're looking for something, you're not going to look through sixty. Yeah, and if it's a financial document, you, if you're looking for something, you're not going to look through 16 pages.
Short and simple.
Yep. Beyond that, as you all know, the town survey closed. We had 912 survey responses. We, you have, some of the information has already been sent to you via email. A lot of the open-ended questions, however, I'm still going through and trying to figure out a way to more succinctly state or restate what their, some of those thoughts were. So I will make available all of those open-ended comments to you if you would like to see them. Otherwise, you will see, you will also see a summary, and that summary should be ready for the February meeting. And that's all I have unless you have questions.
I'll move to adjourn.
Who's going to second? Who's going to second? If all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous, and it still will be 8:30.
Yep.
You did a lot to me.